Hello.
Did we lose Nora's audio?
Lost me.
Yes, somehow it got muted, so we'll start again.
Yep.
Mr. Earl. Okay.
For me?
Announcement is made, the adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at SEC, at the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can also be accessed through the township website using the WebEx link. Um. I apologize, where is my other? This announcement is for members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting. Rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session.
Thank you, our roll call please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jossowitz. You know he's here. Okay, Mr. Kaplan.
Yep.
Mr. Parek.
Here.
Mr. Prasad.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Pleasant.
Ms. Snyder. Mr. Willands.
Here.
And possibly Chairman Ira Kane.
I don't see him.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Uh. You gonna go ahead with it, Davey?
Yeah, go ahead.
Somebody, well, somebody can do it, I guess, right? Uh. Well, we skipped the pledge of allegiance. Uh, the meeting is open to the general public. Anybody who was online who has anything to say about any case that's not on tonight's agenda should raise their hand. Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Seeing none, I'll move on.
Bernie, before you do, I would say just, we aren't saying the pledge because we don't have the flag, we're not informed, but I do think with uh, uh, the events of the past few days in our country here, clearly, uh, this team works very hard and our township should be very proud of our police department and everything goes on here. And we are a united country, our, our board, I think, is a reflection and microcosm of our community. And I hope that we will continue to move forward as a team unified and a group of American citizens doing what's best for all of us in our community. So with that, I'll shut up, okay?
Well said, and should be made formally part of the record. Uh, I don't have the correspondence, you never sent that in the package.
Uh, that's because I sent it to Bob and to Pete. Uh. Is Pete here? Did we lose him?
I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, make us aware of the correspondence.
We, we have um, a letter from the attorney for the seven eleven. Uh, they don't have the consent of the property owner. As a result, um, we are gonna have to take a vote to um, deny their application without prejudice is what they're asking for because they don't have consent to move forward. So essentially they're withdrawing, withdrawing the um, application at this time.
All right, so should we take a? Uh, a vote now or?
Yeah, we can take a vote now and then I'll formally put it in.
Do I have to do by resolution or?
Yeah, I, I would do that. I mean, this was significant application. So we'll take the vote and then I'll have a resolution for you at next meeting.
So do I have a motion to dismiss? Uh. Case, I don't remember, I don't remember the number here.
Seventeen seventy-four.
So moved. That was a good year.
Second ready.
For to be dismissed without prejudice.
So moved, Willans, second ready.
I guess call the roll.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
And then.
I don't know if you need a formal roll call because the resolution. But we can, we'll take the roll call, give a formal roll call when we pass the resolution.
Okay.
There's also an April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, a letter from David Brady uh, requesting application twenty twenty Jihad Zidane two five zero Park Road Block ninety-eight, lot five one dot oh three be carried to July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one without further notice and with required extensions for the board of um, for, for the board to make the decision.
Do they give a reason for such a long?
Before you discuss it, uh, Bernie, this is John Chadwick.
Okay.
I reviewed this back in September. And he required a use variance. I don't know how their notice was set up because it specifically prohibits trailers in the front yard, which is what this proposal is.
The applicant uh, ended up switching attorneys. Um, their planner was not available for this evening and the reason they are uh, booked so far out because that is, was the next available.
I'm not, I'm not questioning your time. Do you know whether they, do you know whether they noticed for use?
Uh, I'd have to go back and uh, double check on that and I apologize. I'm a little out of it tonight, had my second shot and.
Oh boy. Maybe you could just make a note and let them.
I will.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well. I guess we can, we can grant, we can grant the extension subject to confirmation that the notice is for the use variance is proper.
Yes, I just see a case number on this, which one is this?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty twenty. All right, so again. Your motion to the this matter to July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one without further notice subject to confirmation that the notice given was correct.
So.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Second ready. Kaplan made the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Are there any opposed? So. It's passing out. Uh, that brings us to resolutions. We wanna move them one at a time or all together?
It can be done all together.
All right, so. I guess uh, if somebody wants to move all these, the three resolutions for naming the cases.
Mr. Chairman, I move the uh, application approval of application number twenty thirty-six, twenty fifty-nine, twenty-one oh-two uh, in accordance with the uh, resolutions permitted uh, as written under memo of resolutions who can vote.
Second ready.
Okay. I guess we gotta call a roll on this.
Yes.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jossowitz. Prasad.
Yeah.
Ready.
Yes.
Willands.
Yes.
You skipped me.
Who did I skip? I, oh, uh. You were not eligible.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
He would never skip you, Mr. Kaplan.
If you did, I'd let you know about it too.
Yeah, right.
All right, so now we can go on to, I guess, the agenda. Zeldin is off to twenty eighth. Next case is uh, will happen in Nassar. Uh, application twenty colon sixty, one ninety-nine Camden Road. Mr. Nassar, are you on?
Yes. Evening.
Did you raise your right hand?
I believe it's for court attorney.
Do, do you have an attorney?
I do not have an attorney, no.
Okay, just raise, raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's choose to help you got?
Yes, sir, I do.
And for the record, you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes, I am.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, he had, the witness has been, the witness and the applicant has been sworn.
All right, well, Mr. Uh, Nassar, why don't you tell us what you wanna do and why you wanna do it?
Well, sir, the, the fence that I have in the property now is actually falling apart. Uh, I wanted to update uh, from wood into vinyl, uh. I want it to have, um.
Mr. Nassar, I'm having a very difficult time hearing you.
If you can, can you speak a little louder or closer to your microphone?
Yes. So um, the old, the old fence that's on the property now is uh, is a wooden fence and the fence is falling apart. Um, are you guys able to hear me now better?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Um, the fence is falling apart, so I wanted to update the fence into a vinyl fence. And um, I wanted to uh, there was an old shed that was on the property supposedly. Um, it was removed and um, I wanted to put a new shed onto the property.
Was there a foundation where the old shed was?
No, there was not.
Are you playing, putting a foundation in, could you say?
Yes, sir.
You have a corner lot, correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh. How tall is the fence that you wanna take down?
It's six foot.
Do you want to play six foot with six foot?
Yes, sir.
Because normally we don't allow six foot fences.
I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen the property, but uh, the property sits on a flat land and it's, it sits, it sits even with the other properties, but on, on, on the, the houses next to me across the street, two of the properties are sitting higher on a mountain or on a higher land. And those property can actually, they can see right through my backyard and they can see, because I have a, there's a swimming pool in the property. They can actually see the swimming pool and see the whole entire yard. I mean, the whole street could see it. So I'm hoping, you know, with the, with the fence, I can get some type of privacy in the backyard. Um, and with the updating, so.
Do you know whether that's true or not? That, that with the six foot fence, you'll have the privacy you want?
I'm not really exactly sure, um, but the thing is, is that the fence that's there now is falling apart. So the top of it is, some of it is broken and some of the bottom is also damaged. So I'm hoping that with the new vinyl fence, I'll get, maybe it'll be of the same exact size or maybe not, I'm not really sure, but I do know that it's six foot um, standard for the fence, the, the highs that can go.
Mr. Nassar, the other thing is the fence you're proposing is actually uh, on the front part of the Alway Road and so it's like a front yard fence?
It's not really, I mean, it's the side of the house. I mean, I guess it's considered the front yard because I'm on the corner lot, but the pool and the bathroom patio is all next to that fence.
Yeah, I got that, but you basically unfortunately have two front yards in a sense.
Yeah, pretty much.
So, so the big concern on the six foot fence has always been on the street side, okay? So you wanna put a solid fence in. Uh, that's, that's why you need a variance, which would it be and what we have done in many cases is you have four foot salated in a, a one or two foot latticeing or see-through at the top, so it's not a solid six foot. Would that serve your purpose?
No, the only seed, the only see-through um, fence actually where the front of the house is. So if you drive, if you actually see the house, uh, the, when you, you walk in front of the house, there's a see-through metal fence. And then on the side of the house, which is also considered the front of the house, there's a wooden uh, fully, a full fence there.
Just said. That's what you wanna replace?
Yes, sir.
Any other ward members have questions or? Anybody else?
Mr. Berkowitz. You've had a lot of fences in the front yard. It was born. The combinators, the fence, the scribe.
Now they.
A four foot solid with a foot of lattice on the top. And.
Yeah, but he's trying to get some privacy from higher ground next to him, so they're having the lattice on top.
I think, I think he's, I, I think he's gotta show you that then to, to prove that there would be a difference between a five foot and a six foot fence from across the street.
If you wanna do that.
I, Mr. Nassar.
Go to his neighbor's property and take pictures?
Yeah, Mr. Nassar, I think what I have to do to convince the board is ask your neighbor if you could stand in his, on his front steps or whoever the they would be looking at your yard, take a picture.
So.
Mr. Chadwick, I, I like that idea, but before, Mr. Nassar, just for clarification, you currently have a six foot fence, solid wood, but it's falling apart in many places, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, and so the board's point of consideration here or concern is a six foot solid fence on a, on a street. We understand your condition, but would you be opposed to a five foot with latticeing on the top if that were part of the condition for approval?
So I already have uh, the, a six foot my, I would have to purchase a fence, which is ridiculously expensive.
So you've already purchased a six foot vinyl fence?
Yes, sir, I did. It's, it's.
But it's not installed.
It's on, correct.
Be freezing. I know. That's a tough one.
Honestly, if I put the vinyl fence that I have now, I probably, I'll probably still not get the privacy that I'm looking for. Um, I, my main, my huge main concern is to replace that old fence that I have there now. The, the reason why is because I have a big dog, um, and she's still a puppy, so she's not really, um, so if she sees other dogs, she starts to run to, to see the other dogs. So I'm afraid if, God forbid, one of, one of those, the broken fence literally falls off or she pushes it or something and she runs in the street, God forbid she gets hit by a car or she goes to another dog and I'm not sure exactly how she would be with other dogs. Um, she's still, still a puppy, so that's, that's one of my, my main concern. Um, but I do believe that if I do put the new fence, um, it's just gonna create um, a better privacy. Because if you look at the, the fence that I have now, some of the wood that's on top, it's literally missing from the fence, so literally walk, if you walk the street and you stand on the sidewalk, you could actually see my bat, by the inside of my bat. The only thing is that I probably know that I probably would not get a privacy is from those two, three houses that sits on top of that, that hill area. Those are the probably the only two houses that I'm ever get privacy from, so.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, I guess now to the shed. You, you had a shed there supposedly for, but there's no foundation, you're gonna put a shed in now, right?
Yes, sir.
So where are you storing your stuff for the pool now?
Um, it's inside of my house, garage.
And looking at where you're proposing the other variance you need there is because that shed is too close to the property line. Have your neighbors or the street, that's on the street side again. You can't move it back a little bit more?
Um, I can move it back a little bit more, but the found, uh, but the thing is, is that it's still inside the property where the fence is.
Okay. It's not really affecting a neighbor, so I think a couple of feet one way or the other is not gonna matter.
I agree, yeah, Mr. Nassar.
Where was the, where was this before you took it down?
Uh, well, I, I'm, I'm not sure, the realtor that I bought the property from, she told me that there's a fence there. So I'm, I, I don't, I, I honestly don't know where exactly is, um, but there was, there's pieces of old railing, uh, wood railing that's in the ground that's there. So I'm, I'm guessing it was probably sitting on top of there, but I'm not really sure to be exact and I don't wanna make things up, so I don't know exactly, to be honest with you.
Which view are you trying to block? The people from across the street? The other side of Camden?
No, not, not, not on Camden, um, on uh.
Alway.
High road, out, yes.
Alway, yeah.
The people across, across the street from that road, from that view.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you move that shed up next to your patio and you'll certainly have privacy then?
Yeah, that's a good idea as well, I could, I could think of that, but if I put the shed there.
You don't have to put it tied up next to the patio, but you know, you, you certainly would have to get some more privacy back there, that's for sure.
Yeah, but if I put the shed there.
Good idea, Mr. Chadwick.
Way to backyard and I won't have no yard, no yard.
Are we froze up again?
Boo.
Hello?
Where is he?
Foes up again.
There you are.
I still see everybody.
You okay, Davey? It was?
Uh, Davey's with us, he's moving around.
Yeah, but he's not really responding.
He has low bandwidth.
Anybody hear anybody?
Okay, you back? You can't hear us?
I can hear everybody.
Um, Davey's looking like he can't hear, even hear us.
Nora advised that he has low bandwidth, so like he may be having a problem with the, the audio.
Anybody else on the board have any comments or questions? All right. Um. Mr. Nassar, you have anything else you wanna say or add?
Um, no, I, I appreciate the time, that's, um, that's pretty much it, I don't have any much to say. I just, I'm just really trying to, uh, fix my property and make it look decent and um, and make sure that my dog stays in the backyard. Um, other than that, I'm just, you know, I appreciate.
So we have two issues here, we have the shed and that's triggering the impervious coverage, correct? That's the only issue with the shed?
Well.
Yep.
I, as I said, the shed is, is either a property line, but it's gotta be in the front yard to begin with. Yeah. He's got two front yards.
Right.
He's got nowhere else really to put the shed.
It, it's gonna be in a front yard, pretty much.
He, he moves it somewhere else in the front yard, he's basically gonna lose his yard area for anybody to, for his kids to play with. So I don't think it matters too much where the shed is, uh, since it's next to a street and that's what he's proper.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not too worried about the shed, we obviously were in a tough spot with the fence, which he's already purchased. And our long track record of not approving six foot fences.
Well, the, the fence that's there now is six foot.
Doesn't mean we approved it though, that's the only problem.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't necessarily mean we approved that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, it could have been there a long time.
So would this be a pre-existing condition, consideration?
Oh, I have no evidence as to how long the fence was there, what it was built.
It depends, it depends when it was installed. If it pre-existed the uh, organs.
It's highly unlike a wood fence, it's seventy years old. Is that, your office is fifty-four.
So it's probably not a pre-existing.
Okay. Well, when was the first zoning one?
Fifty-four.
Okay.
But for my end of here, just to make sure, the, the six foot fence, we don't allow on the street side. We still have solid six foot fences in other parts of properties, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And where is located, it doesn't affect traffic at all or visibility for turns on the one road to the next?
No, not at all.
Well. We, we usually get some kind of statement from the police department confirming that. Is that something we should ask for?
I mean, I'm a police officer, myself, I understand that.
I, I don't think you, you should be the one to do that, though.
We can make that a requirement of the um, resolution.
The alternative, you have done a fence and set it a couple of feet off the property line and, and some landscaping between the fence and the property line to soften that, that view from the street. Might wanna discuss that with Mr. Nassar.
Mr. Nassar, so you understand that proposal?
All right, I, I didn't understand. I, I, so, so if I, when I put the, where the fence is gonna be, um, I'm, I'm, you're looking at at least uh, thirty feet away from the corner of Camden and Alway. So there's a huge, I mean, you could, two or three cars can actually be the oncoming traffic.
I'm not talking about sight distance, I'm just talking about disguising this fence from the roadside, the, the point is, the policy of the town is not to have fences in the front yard, and if you do, they can only be four feet high in a picket fence or a rail fence. Yours is obviously not that, so I'm suggesting the board has asked so, move the fence a little bit off their property line, then put some uh, shrubbery along, not completely block it, but accent type shrubbery, which makes the appearance of the road much different.
So. If you're standing on Camden Road facing my house, there's a railing, there is a railing fence that you can see right through the fence. That one I'm not gonna change.
Okay, good.
I'm, I'm gonna keep my, the, what I'm trying to replace is the one on the side of Alway. That's, that's.
Bring it back, you're gonna bring it back to the corner of your house too. You start at the house, go out to um, Alway and then up Alway.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you still, you still going to.
On Alway is the variance. And it's just saying you really prefer not to move the fence off your property line and put any landscaping there.
Um, I, I would.
Are you open to that?
If, I can, because if I put landscaping there, my dog will run out of the.
The landscaping is gonna be on the outside of the fence.
It'll be.
Mr. Chadwick's proposal is you move the fence back a couple, three feet. In front of the fence, between the fence and the street, you put some landscaping to subdue the look from the residents and the neighborhood for the six foot fence.
Some of those, uh, you know, those ornamental grasses and thing, you know, that'll really soften it.
Would you be willing to do that if we approved it?
I'm sorry, if I, if I put, if I put landscaping uh, uh, on Alway, is that what you're saying?
Yes, you put up the fence, you, you move the fence back a couple, three feet from where you're proposing on Alway. Outside of the fence, between the fence and Alway, you put some landscaping to soften the look of the solid fence.
Okay, I, I probably won't be able to do three feet into the property, the reason being is because the, the pool is sits right by the fence. So I would have to move, I would have to remove all that and move it up. That means I have to dig into the ground and break the cement that's from the pool to shorten the, the, the pipes for the, for the filter of the pool.
Your, your survey doesn't show this at all.
No, it doesn't.
I didn't even know you had a pool.
Oh, yeah, there's, I mean, it's on the survey.
You got, where it looks like somebody drew it in. It's over in the corner. But it's not up next to the fence.
The, the pool is in the back, um.
Oh, it says pool, really small.
Yeah, where it says block two seventeen, that square is the pool. To the right, the, the, the top right corner, all the way to the right, there's a little box that was drawn in to, to the, uh, planner's, um, uh, comment. It's not to scale, so it doesn't show really what the location is.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's about, it's about a foot away from the fence. So I mean, I don't mind moving the fence a little, a foot closer. I don't mind doing that if that's going to approve to get more of the side, because I can get more of the house. It's just that I just don't want to lose the backyard. I mean, I don't have, if, if you see the house now, I literally have no backyard at all. From, for like any grass and things like that. And I, and I actually, I actually like the grass and I like the plants and I like, um, uh, landscaping and things like that. So that, that will be the only concern that I have. I mean, I'm okay moving the fence a foot closer into the house to be closer to the, to the, to the filter of the pool. I'm okay doing that, if that's okay with you guys.
Unfortunately, not enough to, to plant something, really.
It'll, it'll be tight.
It, it's, it's gonna be really, really tight. It's, it's already tight as it is, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Well.
This is why I'm here today, to try to get some help and see, uh, what's the best that I could do, because honestly, they don't have any room at all for their yard. So, um.
Okay, so could I try one thing here? Uh, obviously, we, we, uh, appreciate your dilemma. We're trying to work with you here, but we also have ordinances to enforce it, and that's why we have them. So in summary, your proposal as written has your the proposed fence right on your current property line. Is that correct? Along Aloe?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that, that's an issue. So you could, you can bring it back in a bit, okay? But the issue you'll have then is the current, and I understand the pool situation. The current pool filter system and heater is within one foot of your property line there?
It's just, uh, it's, um, it's just about one foot away from the fence that's there now.
Okay. All right, and the fence is there or not is right on your property line where this is the one you're gonna try to replace, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so you could, you have plenty of room in the other part of the property. Mr. Nas saw to, to move the fence in, but when you get back to the corner where the pool equipment, that heater is, you would not have be, be able to move it in too much more, but you could angle the fence a little bit, could you not?
Um, I can angle the fence going down, so it can.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Angle down, so you have a little more space there. You could put some landscaping out in front of that, okay? If that were a condition of the approval, okay? And then you, you're also considering and would agree to move the shed up closer to, uh, the, uh, the pool area in the back.
Sure.
Okay. If those were two conditions and then, and the board approved it with those conditions, you would be amenable to that, is that correct? You really wanted to move the shed? Well, I think the shed, the other, the other, the, the shed's not there now, uh, Bernie, okay?
Yeah, no, it's not there now, but I'm just thinking.
The shed is there now.
Yeah, the shed is up?
Yeah, the shed, the shed is there now, yes.
Oh, okay.
Where's the shed? Can you point that out?
It's so, it's right, it's right on the side of the house. So if you're, if you're on Aloe, you can see it on the side of the house.
It appears the shed was shown as part of his survey.
Okay. All righty.
I mean, I can, I can definitely angle this, the, the fence on the side going toward the shed. I could definitely angle that, uh, closer to the shed. And I could put landscaping there, absolutely. There's no problem at all. The only issue that I'm gonna have, I'm, I'll be honest with you, is, is the area where the, for the, for the filter and the heater is. That's going to give me a huge problem because.
Yeah, but that's just what's spied on a whole, you know, long, uh, what, fifty feet, thirty feet?
From Camden and, um, and the, the, the fence?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's about thirty to forty feet. Probably maybe a little longer, um, wider, uh, longer than that. And there's nothing there. I'm actually planning, planning on putting landscaping there.
Excuse me, is, is there a retaining wall in the back of your property?
Uh, no, there isn't. There is just, just another fence there.
Well, there, there's something on the, 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 uh, the, the plan that the, that you gave that is behind your pool. Is that a pipe?
Um, by, by.
Behind your pool, there, it, there's something drawn on your, on, on your survey.
Oh, it's, it's a fence.
It's labeled as a wall.
I think it's a wall.
So that's, that's what I asked. He said no, though.
No, there's no wall. There's no wall, um, at all. I don't have any walls around the pool. All I have is the fence in the front, the fence on the side, and then the, um, right behind, right behind, uh, the back of the yard.
So that's the fence on the back of the pool.
Yes, yes.
How old is this pool?
Um, I, I think when I, when I purchased the house, um, the inspector came and he said about twenty years old.
So it was there when you bought the house?
Oh.
Did you make any radios or anything around it?
No, I didn't make anything. I didn't do anything at all.
All right, so. I have to ask if there's any members of the public who, or want to speak or, uh, in favor of this application or against this application? Raise your hand. Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Uh.
I have a question on the, on the, um, date of the survey. It says, uh, two thousand and seventeen. Were the, uh, pool, water heater and the shed installed by, at that date? I'm just wondering why it wasn't drawn on the survey.
So the, the, oh, the. Oh, it actually wasn't installed. It's, it's been there as long as the, the pool.
The, um, survey isn't that old and, uh, I just see all the markings. Who penciled in the, uh, all the, uh, other information notes?
Uh, I'm not sure. That's, the way the survey is, is the way that I had.
To explain why they're, why so inaccurate.
Couldn't say what's certified. When did you purchase the property?
Uh, November of last year.
Okay. So whose survey was done before you owned the property, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, 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 I think that right now, uh, you purchased property and have some condition you weren't aware of, and you're trying to improve the property, I believe, for the betterment of, uh, the area. You're gonna replace a bad looking fence with a new fence. Uh, but you have some zoning issues here. So, Mr. King or Ms. Chadwick, uh, how, how should, uh, can you direct the board here on, uh, how to move forward if we wanted to try and approve this? He's agreed to move the fence back and put some landscaping out in front? Is it, uh, can we approve those conditions if you rewrite the res, uh, proposal that way?
I, I mean, I, I think what John had said in the beginning, what, our, our position always has been, uh, four foot with lattice on top. Um, I think what John was saying to try to get the six foot, the board may need more documents, i.e. pictures, um, to show that, um, he truly does need that six foot solid fence. If, if he does do that, then I think you can kind of mitigate it, as John pointed out, to bring back the fence at least in the front three foot and then start to taper back, as you had said, in the back. So there is some type of planting, um, to soften that fence.
Mr. Nas, could you provide those photographic evidences?
I can definitely provide that, but I mean, if you guys have a minute, uh, if you guys want to look at Google Map, you can actually see the street and you can see the house. Look at the, how, how, and Aloe, you can actually look and see the entire backyard from Google Maps.
Unfortunately, we can't, we can't do that.
Okay.
That has to be in evidence, so.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not, it's not evidentiary.
Sure. I could take pictures and provide it to you guys, um, however you guys want me to do so.
So does that mean we're gonna postpone this?
Well, that's one option. The other option would be, uh, put a conditional improvement on, assuming that that is satisfactorily met. Can we do that, Mr. King?
I, I, I think the best course is just to carry this until you get those pictures, bring it back for, you know, one more time. Because after, once you get those pictures, you may have more questions. And also, uh, Mr. Nas, if you can get pic, take pictures of that, um, pool equipment, so they can, the board can see where it is and, and how far away it is from the, um, uh, the, the current fence.
It wouldn't hurt to get an updated survey either, or at least give it an attempt to draw it into scale to see what we're working with or how the fence is gonna be modified.
So, uh, this is going to be delayed, uh, again, because, um, I was supposed to do this meeting, uh, had COVID and, um, uh, from work, so I, it was just hard to get things done. So I'm, so look at our other.
Nora, can we squeeze this on someplace? Because it should be about a half hour. Or less.
This, this should be fif, than one fifteen minutes.
This should be fifteen minutes.
We are packed, um, hold on.
We're popular again, huh?
Uh, I, I mean, if you could put it in, what, how are we to look, Nora, at the next meeting? And this is not gonna take long. We've heard all the testimonies. Really a matter of looking at the pictures and making a determination.
We have a couple of code enforcements that we've carried to the next meeting, three of them plus three new residential. And if you want to try to squeeze it in, up to you.
Of course, that may fifth.
I'm sorry?
Is that May fifth?
May fifth. I mean, these meetings are packed tight.
Well, we could just work faster, that's.
You know what? Would it be horrible to put them on May nineteenth? It's another, it's a huge meeting. Huge applications on there, uh, but it might work better than the other one, the other day.
Okay. Uh.
I, I hate to put, I hate to put them off, but, um, the, the application of that night will be carried.
You're talking about one month.
I'm, I'm actually holding up a lot of time and I mean, if that's, if that's the final, yeah, I guess I have no other to say, but, uh.
How do we handle, how do you, you want to have them submit the pictures and then make copies of them or? How do you want to handle this?
Yes, he should.
He has the ability to show us the pictures.
And you should make the pictures.
They should be mailed out to us.
Yeah, it, it, yes, you should make the pictures and send it to Nora, and then she'll send them out to each individual, um, board member.
Okay.
You can have them before, you can review them, so the process will go quicker.
All right, if you want to do it that way, it, I mean, you want to try to put it on our next meeting, May fifth.
I, I would vote for that. We can, we can squeeze it in for you.
I can get the pictures.
Okay. Mr. Nas, uh, you also need to have the pictures, as Mr. Chadwick said, or Mr. King said, to, in the backyard to show us that, because the current survey is missing some stuff for us to make a decision on.
I, I could take the picture tomorrow and I could drop off to, uh, or I can email tomorrow, um, tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Because she sends out the packages to us early, so they'll be in there. So, have a motion to carry this case to May fifth?
So moved.
No further notice?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Any votes? No votes. All right, so you're gonna get us pictures and we'll see you again on May fifth?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Have a great day.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, because the next case is Harish Karani. See variants to construction store basketball court and above ground pool and a hot tub. Are you with us, Mr. Karani?
Yes, I am, sir.
Sir, you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board choose to help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, um, you're Harish Karani?
Yes, sir.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Correct.
And you're not represented by an attorney, correct?
No, I'm not represented by an attorney.
Thank you. This, Mr. Chairman.
He swore.
Mr. Chairman, he has been sworn.
Do you have any other witnesses or just gonna be you?
Just me.
All right, so what do you, tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it.
Okay, uh, I want to install a basketball, I, I want to install a patio and put a basketball hoop, uh, goalpost there uh, in my backyard, uh, because I have a sloping driveway. It slopes, uh, the slope is quite severe. It's not a gentle slope. It's about twenty-five, thirty degrees. It's, 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 you know, it's, it's it's not a slope that anyone can play, uh, basketball on. So, uh, my, my son, he's actually with me. We are in the car, uh, we're going somewhere. Um, we are, um, you know, so he, he like, he's thirteen years old. He wants to play basketball. He cannot really go and play. He, he used to play in the county, in the, in, in town, uh, at the foul gym. It's closed now. This, uh, whole year went by, uh, you know, this, this is his favorite sport. He, he likes that. So he, he, you know, I, so I decided that I want to put, uh, you know, a, a basketball court in a, in my backyard, uh, because that is, my backyard is flat where I'm putting the court. And, uh, it's gonna be the most safest place to play, uh, basically. And I'm also installing, uh, I, I, I'm also, you know, asking for a variance for a above ground pool because my daughter likes to swim and she hasn't, you know, like no swimming pool right now is open. And, uh, it's, you know, I know, uh, we are in COVID, uh, we have vaccines now, but, you know, there, there are new variants in, in play now, and I think for the next few years, I think two, three years at least, uh, you know, uh, public pools are not gonna be open. And, you know, I've lived in this town, I've lived in this house for seventeen years. I never needed to put a pool there or a basketball court because I had other options. Right now, I don't have, my kids don't, don't have any options. So is, that is why I'm, uh, putting in and, you know, I'm applying for a variance.
Okay. Um, I, I guess where you want to put the basketball court, what, what kind of fencing is there?
Uh, I have, uh, a chain link fence, uh, which I just put in, uh, like about a month ago. I, I had applied for a permit. I got the permit and I put a chain link fence in the back. And in the, it is six foot tall chain link fence in the back. In the front, or actually not the front, the side of the house that faces the, the part in the back, which faces the street. I have a four foot fence and it's also, uh, like, you know, like straight lines. It's not a chain link. It's, uh, it's. It's uh, it's basically see-through, like you can see through it, but it's like white color rods. Uh, I don't know how to say it in technical terms. And it's the, the, the fence that I installed is uh, you know, pool code.
And do you have a neighbor on that side?
Uh, I, yes, I do have a neighbor on the side. Uh, I have a neighbor on my left and my right. I don't have any neighbors in the back at all. Uh, so the neighbor, uh, the basketball fence, the basketball patio is gonna go on the left side of the house. If you're facing and looking at the house from the street, it's gonna be on the left side of the house. Uh, and basically it's gonna be seven feet away, uh, which is the code uh for me to do anything. Uh, you know, I have to be seven feet away from the property line, my property line. So, so I have a fence which is, I think, six inches or, you know, uh, you know, it's four foot and it's six inches. Then between the fence and the, the, the patio, uh, sorry, we're, between the fence and where the, the concrete patio will start, there'll be about five feet of space. There'll, there'll be like just grass. And then I'll have a patio, uh, which will have, you know, a goalpost for the basketball. And after that, uh, right, you know, right behind my house will be the swimming pool above ground. And uh, the size of the pool is uh thirty by fifteen. It's uh oval. And at, right after that is gonna be an eight-foot hot tub, you know, right next to the pool. And that's it.
Have you discussed or have you talked to your neighbor uh next door? That there's gonna be a basketball court there?
Yeah, yeah.
And what do they say?
They have no objection. They are, they're actually excited about, they're, you know, uh, my neighbor actually called me because one of my neighbors does not uh live at this property anymore. He's the owner, but he doesn't live there. Uh, he has uh, you know, he, he has rented the house out to someone. And I know that, that their tenant as well, very well, because they are my neighbors. They've been there for, I would say, at least five, six years. And, you know, they're, you know, so, so basically that tenant said, it's actually a good idea having a pool and, and a basketball court and a hot tub uh appreciates the value of my house. And it is, you know, so it generally helps the neighborhood. I don't know if, if that's, you know, how, how accurate that is, but, you know.
I'll seriously too. Uh, there's an engineering uh letter dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, will you comply with what the engineer has requested?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry? Can you repeat that?
There's a letter from the town engineer. It's dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Will you comply with all the requirements and? Okay.
I agree, yes.
I, I have a question. Good. How, how are we gonna address the stormwater runoff? I'd like to know that before we proceed.
Uh, the stormwater runoff right now is, the, the way I have it is basically uh I have a drainage uh in undergr- uh, in ground, like it's, it's buried drain in my backyard. And it basically takes excess water and it goes underground and it comes out and drains to the street. And there is a, you know, drainage, uh, a, a, a street drain. It, it, it takes all the water. Uh, ev- everything from my roof goes down the gutters and then there's a underground, uh, you know, drainage.
Are you gonna build a drain uh on the basketball court? So that the water is gonna run off from the court into the drain into the sewer?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Was that drain put in when the house was built?
I'm sorry?
Was that drain put in when the house was built?
No, the, the, the drain was put in when I moved the rocks. Uh, I have like a retaining rock wall in the back. I had to move the rock wall back. And when they put the rock wall back, they, they moved it about uh ten, eleven feet back. When they did that, they said, when we, this is a new code, when we put the rock walls, like if, if you put a rock retaining wall, then we have to put a drain behind it. So, you know, it doesn't like, you know, uh, it doesn't put like, you know, pressure on the rocks, I guess. I don't know. But that, that drain wall, that, that, that uh sub- like underground drain that is behind the rock wall connects to the uh, the drainage from the, my roof. The roof gutters come down, uh, they go into the ground and then they drain out to the street.
Unless, unless Chaz has any um comment on the, the drain, in, in the resolution would be subject to the town engineer's um approval. So he would have to work with the town engineer. The town engineer would have to approve that plan unless, Chaz, you have any comment?
No, I, I agree with that. I saw the engineers' letter. Uh, what material will the basketball court be made out of?
Um, it will be made out of uh concrete.
If it's tied into the drain, I think the township engineer would be the proper place to go for that.
So, so my, the, the, the person who, the contractor who was building, who, who I'm talking to to build the, uh, the basketball, you know, square thingy, uh, the square floor, uh, that contractor said that you, you know, you can, he can basically put a drain on the edge where, where the patio ends. He can put a drain there and it will connect right to the drainage. So what are?
Sounds like a good, good plan.
That would be subject to then, they were deferring to the town engineer, so you'll have to get approval of that plan from the town engineer and that will be part of the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, you just have your contractor talk to him. I have just a couple of things on your proposed plan here. The uh, the above-ground pool, you, you have a currently existing deck off the back of your houses, am I correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is the uh proposed above-ground pool gonna be connected to that deck at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cause it, it shows separated here, but I was gonna say, obviously it should be connected, so. This drawing is not quite to scale, okay? And then the uh, the hot tub, will that also be connected to the deck?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then, okay, so that, this look graphic we're looking at is a little misrepresenting, right?
Uh, yeah, it's not.
So, so if those are part of the deck, that's fine. So those, uh, that wouldn't be included then in the impervious coverage thing, I don't think. So, uh, okay. I guess I just, pardon me?
That's the problem. They include one surfaces as impervious.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I was gonna ask you, Mr. Chadwick, okay? So those two new additions, so the impervious coverage, we have to approve also, which appears to be, I would say, uh, the minimus, but, no, anyway. There's still impervious coverage. I didn't quite understand though, if in fact the uh proposed above-ground pool and the proposed hot tub and the court are all new, why impervious coverage is only going up by seven percent?
Uh, I'm sorry, is that a question for me?
Well, it's, it's a question I have. I don't know who could answer it for me, and maybe Mr. Chadwick can, but.
I looked at the numbers and I think it's correct.
Okay, very good.
It's actually, you know, it's thirty percent increase.
Good point. Seven, seven percent over twenty-two percent. You're right, thank you, okay.
There's a couple of questions I have. Are you gonna put lights around this court?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Are you going to put lights on the court?
Uh, I don't think so, no.
Well, it, it's, it's.
Should I?
But we can't have a definite, we have to have yes or no.
No, you probably shouldn't.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think you should.
Okay.
Another thing you mentioned, that you thought the court was gonna be seven feet away from and the zoning schedule says you're proposing it five. Do you know for certain you're gonna be seven feet off your property line?
I, I said seven feet away because I was uh told uh at the office, I, I uh, I, I believe uh Mr. John Pizza uh told me that the, you know, because it's a concrete patio, it has to be seven, seven feet away from the property line. So I said, okay, I'll, I'll comply.
Well, you. You advertise for variance for five.
Is it five feet?
Only one little corner that, that court would be in violation, so I just.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
At the five feet.
Okay.
The chairman and board members.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the other corner that's seven feet. One corner's seven, one corner's five.
Is that what it is?
I think so.
Yeah.
So on average, he meets the code.
I guess you could say that.
Okay.
Any else? Any else you wanna add?
I just wanna make sure senior son, as senior son's was in the backseat, I want to make sure he knows how lucky he is.
Yeah, there you go. And that's my wife.
Hello, I will be playing basketball.
You'll be swimming in the hot tub, right?
I don't know if you can see her. There you go. That's the one who's gonna be swimming. And that's my mother-in-law. We're all going to a wedding in Virginia. That's why I, I just pulled over so that I can have this conversation.
It's amazing what uh Travis can do.
Technology.
Yeah. Is there anybody online here who's got uh either anything in favor or opposing this application, they wanna say? Raise your hand. Any hands raised, Nora?
No hands raised.
Okay, and I guess we can move on to uh again, any last questions from any board members? Or you wanna just discuss? Somebody wanna say something about this application? I think we have a, a citizen here that's gonna be improving their property nicely for the immediate family and apparently for the neighborhood. And I'll be voting in favor of this uh. Okay, can I get a motion for a resolution? Anybody?
I can do it.
You hear me?
Okay.
Application twenty-one oh one, Harish Karani, Free Battle Ridge Road, Lot fifteen eight, Lot thirty-four, known R dash one M. Recommend granting a C variance to construct and install a basketball court, above-ground pool and hot tub. Contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns eight and thirteen, in cooperation with the engineering department.
Second?
Second, thirty.
Uh, Colorado.
Burkley.
Yes.
Josh Bullock.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik. Harik. I mute yourself.
Yes.
Uh, Prasad.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Uh, we'll do, we the formal resolution, I don't know, at the next meeting, hopefully. And then you can.
Okay, so I have to wait till I hear it from the town? Uh, will I get something in the middle or?
You'll hear, you'll hear from Nora that the resolution's passed and then she'll tell you what to do.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for your time and.
Enjoy your wedding and drive safe.
Thank you. Bye.
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 Okay, uh, next case uh moving on to is uh application twenty, twenty-one oh one. Harish Karani. Well, we just did that, I'm sorry. Uh, application twenty-one oh three, Usha Sony. Usha Sony, are you with us?
Yes.
There you are.
Who's gonna testify, ma'am?
Testify.
Me, me, me and my daughter both.
Okay, can you both raise your hands, your right hands? Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board to choose help you got?
Yes.
And from the left, your daughter, can you state your name?
Yeah, first name Kiran, last name Sony.
And to the right, mom, what's your last?
My last name Sony and first name USA, U S H A.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You're sworn. You can drop your hand.
I apologize. Can I please have the daughter's name?
Can you spell your first name?
Yeah, it's K I R A N.
Thank you.
Thank you. So who's gonna tell us uh what you wanna do and why?
Uh, I can explain to you. Uh, right now I have the four car and uh it's hard to fit the three car in my driveway because there is a tree that blocking my driveway. And the winter time, it's when it's the snow, it's hard to get all the car off the street. So I just wanted to extend the driveway.
So you wanna add more driveway to, to your property?
Yeah, so um, right now we have a existing driveway. And um, so we essentially just want to uh remove the tree and just like fill that area in.
You wanna go, you need to go to the property line?
Uh, well, the, the existing driveway that we have right now is the way that, uh, when we bought the house, that's how it was. And that runs up to the property line.
Okay, so your current driveway, you have a one-car driveway pathway, pass the tree and then pass the tree, it opens up, right? On the street?
I'm, I'm sorry, just.
Okay, so on the graphic that you gave us on the survey.
Uh-huh.
Your current driveway has a one cut from the curb into your property for one car to go up. And then you turn, go past the tree and you have driveway behind that all the way up to your, uh, to the fence line, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so now before, below that, you have a tree between and near the, by the street. You wanna take the tree out and make that all driveway?
Yes.
That's why you're here, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But you're not asking for it to extend the curb cut, are you?
Um, may, maybe four or five blocks. Just to make, to bring that, you know, the fourth car in.
Do you know how wide your existing driveway is?
Uh, how wide it is?
Yes.
Um, it's a, about twenty-one feet wide.
Can two cars pass in that driveway?
Um, two cars can fit side by side. You, you kinda just have to go in at an angle to, you know, like go around the tree.
But if you take the tree down, you're still gonna have the curb there.
Yeah. So then we would just cut the amount of curb to just fit that fourth car in.
Okay, you mean, i- i- the board has looked at the um town engineer's letter?
Uh-huh.
It's his understanding that the driveway in question is already built. So is this a legalization of an existing driveway or is it a legal, or you're trying to legalize the existing driveway and then try to build out the driveway even more? How was it, how was this noticed?
So it would be legalizing the existing driveway and then expand in terms of. And then expand in terms of just getting rid of that tree and just filling in that little like corner where the tree was.
So right now it's, it's more narrow at the bottom and it widens at the top.
Correct.
You want to remove the tree, widen the bottom.
Yes, yeah, that's it. We can fit our fourth car in there.
Okay, and then when the memo says that you must be aware that the existing curb shall not be cut or manipulated. That means you're going to widen the bot, if I interpret that correctly, you're going to widen the bottom, but leave the curb alone.
Yeah, so we actually did speak to the engineering office about it and they said that if we were to go through them with the permit and the curb cut wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be problem. They just say you guys have to take the open road permit, that's all, yeah.
So the, the, the problem that I have is that on your application, what you have is legalize existing driveway. You're, you're coming here now wanting to legalize the existing driveway and then increase the driveway. Now Nora, what, how was this advertised?
I apologize. I apologize. I don't, I don't have the file with me on this, though. It was advertised exactly as it spelled out on the zoning officer's review. So is to legalize, um, you know, the driveway expansion contrary to section four thirty dash two seven five X.
So it's, it's to legalize a two hundred and two point one square foot driveway expansion. And again, I'm not an engineer, but is that the ex, ex, expansion which is hash marked on the survey? And if that is.
Then it's existing.
Then it's existing and this is a, this, this whole thing about trying to take down a tree and expand the driveway hasn't been properly advertised and shouldn't quite honestly be acted on. Is, is, Mr. Chadwick, do you see the measurements on this? Can you?
Yeah, I see, I see other problems. I read the engineer's report. They're not going to permit you to widen this driveway.
Yeah.
Because the maximum driveway in residential uh, the zone is twenty-four feet. He thinks it's twenty-two feet that wide now. If they take that tree down and widen, then it's in the variance.
Mr. Chadwick, can you help me on that? Because I'm looking at this drawing. And the, the area that has got this lines through at the graphic part, to me, that's a very small sliver going out to the street. I think the twenty-two feet is the larger part above, am I wrong? Because if that went back to the street, twenty-two feet, the part above has got to be sixty feet.
You know, the, the, you see twelve feet by the garage. So and you've got nine feet beyond, so that's where she's getting her twenty-two feet, you're right.
Well, it says sixteen feet.
The driveway is much less than twenty-two feet.
It looks like it's sixteen feet.
Huh? Fifteen feet maybe?
Well, it says sixteen feet in the, in the, in the, in the width of the garage, I guess.
I thought that was the twelve.
But it, it's already been widened, though.
It looks like it was six.
Yeah.
But it's already.
What the, what the plan shows and what she wants to do are two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They're different things. Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
The application says legalize driveway and expand driveway.
The plan doesn't show the.
But that wasn't in the notice.
Nor does the plan show it. There's still the tree in the plan.
Right.
Yeah.
She's showing the crosshatch where she's going to repair what is pre-existing.
No, that part was already.
Everything after that that she's talked about isn't shown on the plan.
The crosshatching was already done, right?
Yeah, so where you, where you see the cross lines, that's already there, which is the existing driveway and that's how it is when we bought the house. There wasn't any changes to it. So um, essentially we would just be where you see that tree in the bottom. We had tried to remove that tree and just fill in the area.
Yeah, I, again, Bernie, if you look at the the residential application, which is behind the zoning department residential application.
Yeah.
It just says legalize existing driveway. The applicant filled this out. The reasons for this or in the, in the subsequent pages, the last page is, is that driveway is wider at the top and narrower at the bottom compared to other properties. Um, additional reason to justify the board's approval is property was bought with the driveway as it is. So there's nothing in that request that talks about expanding the, the driveway. So as Mr. Chadwick said, you know, this application, and again, I don't have the notice, but it looks like the application is just to legalize the driveway, which on the, the survey is shown in the hash, hash marks. Uh, today, tonight, the applicant then testified that they wanted to further expand by taking down a tree um, in that, in that little corner there. And you have the town engineer's um, letter that I think supports the fact that um, this application is really just to legalize the driveway.
Yeah, so in order for, so when we went to the zoning department to talk to them, they said that the area we would fill in where the tree would be is still considered an expansion. So then that's why when we applied for it, it was written as to legalize driveway expansion.
Unfortunately, it's the correct way to do it. I think you understand.
I think, yeah, I, I think there was some mistake in the semantics. Because, because the zoning department application and the zoning board application are two different things.
Yeah, because we, we talked to them and, um, you know, got their input on how to write it in the application and this is how we were advised to do it.
It's.
Looks like some misunderstanding went on this application. Applicant actually wanted to legalize the existing one and to expand also where the tree has been cut. So this is a misunderstanding, so is there any way that we can consider both of them in the same?
I think they'd have to renotice. Wouldn't they?
Uh, yes, because right, right now I think that you're looking at an expansion of this, you're looking at legalization of two hundred and two point one square feet. It, it doesn't say a legalization of the two hundred and two point one square feet and a further expansion of X amount of feet, whatever that is, in that area where the tree is located.
So I, I believe the two hundred and two is included with the tree.
Again, I, I, I'm not an engineer. I don't have that little slide ruler. Um, I, I, I can't measure. Maybe Chaz, you can help out here on what, where, where that two hundred and two point one fo, foot is, is that the hash mark or is that hash mark including the um, area that's not hash marked that has a tree in it?
Because it, it should be including, because when we brought this to the zoning board, um, I had to, you know, like draw it out and explain it to, to Mr. Pizza and.
Here's the thing, the way I read this when I was going over the packet before the meeting, all I saw was legalize. The tree is in the schema. There's nothing, there's nothing about additional. If I'm a neighbor and I'm concerned about this and I was noticed, I have no clue that that tree is coming down and the driveway is being widened, which by the way, it's on the property line. Clearly, like if there, if there's a fence there, I don't see how you even open a car door.
I mean, there, there is a fence there. The way it is right now, the, the way you guys get in the survey, there's um, two cars at, at the top of the driveway, two cars can fit side by side. At the bottom of the driveway where it's narrow, barely one car is able to fit there.
Well, I, I, bottom line is I agree with Mr. King. I, I do think this should probably be renoticed. And give everyone a chance to fully understand what the intentions are.
Yeah, and I think if you.
It's also, it's also a problem because you can't scale off of this print because it's a reduced copy.
Yeah.
So that poses scale up.
But Chaz, even if you look at the numbers and top of the driveway, it's eight point nine. So when you look at the calculations that the zoning officer did, the width that they calculated was eight point nine by length of nineteen. That would probably be the um, bigger solid piece. And then the other, the three foot with, to Bernie's point, by eleven might be, I think is the um, thinner, thinner piece. And that's how they came up with the two oh two point one. And that would be only the hashed marked portion of the driveway. I don't think that includes the expansion where the tree is.
So how, how long would you estimate? I'm trying to estimate of the survey.
Well, there's a twenty-seven, th, th, there's a, a line marking and a number um, the far end of the, the driver, it looks like twenty-seven. I'm, I'm using a magnifying.
Yeah, I, I see the eight point nine.
Yeah, I see the twenty-seven.
And when you add up the lengths, the nineteen and the eleven, that's, that's thirty. So twenty-seven may go to that, that little corner bump out. And that if that, and the driveway expands that little bump out, that, that could make up your three foot and that probably would be appropriate. But again, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, the eight point nine times the twenty-seven would be two hundred and forty point three square feet.
Zoning, zoning denial or summary did not include the tree or the area around the tree.
I'm sorry.
I think you're correct.
So it appears that.
If I came to Town Hall, I would have looked at the plan. I don't know the trees being cut down. Whether I'm concerned about it or not is not for us to decide.
So are you going to put this off until it's renoticed or?
Well, the, the, right, well, before the, before this board, that, how I look at it is you just have a, a request to legalize an, an existing driveway, which is two hundred two point one square foot. You don't have any variant, or any application before your request that wasn't properly noticed to expand that. So I think you can either grant the relief that was requested, which was the legalization. Um, but you, you can't act on the further expansion.
Mr. King, the legalization, the property, they, they bought the property with the driveway as a, in a hash mark place the way it is, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, but it was never approved. So when they went to ask for the removal of the tree in that, which we're not approving tonight because it's not on the application, they were told that it wasn't ever legalized. Is that correct?
That I don't know.
Okay, so we don't know either. So my point is uh, if they bought the property that, that way, why can't this board go ahead and approve the legalization of the existing driveway and they have to renotice for the tree removal and to make the expansion?
Well, that's what I said.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, then you're talking about them having to write, file a whole new application.
Because.
Whereas here, if we just amend, amend the applicant, allow them to amend the application, include the expansion and then put it off for them a chance to renotice with that request as part of any other notice.
When did you buy the house?
They don't have to go through, they are filing a new application all over again. They're doing two applications for one.
Good point, Bernie, yeah.
What year did you buy the house?
Two thousand and seven.
Okay.
So when we bought the house, the tree was already there. So right now the fourth car we cannot park in, in the, if we park in the street, the winter time when the snow it's hard to get all the car off and the police give us ticket. That's why we trying to just remove that tree and just filling that, that's the, the spot. That's all, only want to do.
Understood.
So I think there's two things you can do, ma'am. You can either um, adjourn this. You're gonna, you're going to have to amend your application to include that area where the tree is. It'll have to be submitted again to the town engineer because I'm sure he's going to have far more comments. Or what you can do is you can ask the board to approve the legalization of the existing driveway. So you have to tell us what you want to do so the board.
Yeah, if you do that, you're stuck with the tree.
That's correct.
So um, just a question. So when we originally, you know, brought this to these, to Mr. Pizza and the zoning um, office and we had told him that this is how the drive, the existing driveway is the way it is when we bought the house back in two thousand and seven. So we explained to him what we were trying to do. He said you have to legalize the existing and then also say that you're trying to expand the driveway. So that's how it was filed.
I, 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 I wasn't there, you know, and Mr. Pease is not here to say what he did or didn't say. But this application, it, it doesn't take into account for that expansion that you want to do. It looks like to us, and again, the, the, the survey's not to scale, but it looks like, and, and from what the zoning officer calculated and from her face sheet, it says the following variance is required to legalize a two hundred and two point one square foot driveway expansion. It doesn't say to legalize a X amount foot expansion plus increase it by X amount.
Okay, yeah, that, that's why, because we had Mr. Mr. Pizza help us with the um.
I, I, again, I, he was not here to, to, to say what was said or not said.
Yeah, you know, in my opinion, it is better that you postpone this and make it an am, amendment to include that the tree portion of the area also included in the expansion site. Does it make sense of, of?
Yeah, it, it, that does. That, that would save them money so they don't have to do another um, application.
Good.
So.
All right, so Ms., Ms. Sony.
Yes.
I guess it is, you're asking us, this is what you, you're asking us to amend the application to include removal of the tree and expansion of the driveway. Plus also, I guess, additional curb cut. Uh, which has, which, which have to deal with the town engineer on. And once, once we grant your request to amend the application and we have to put this off for another date so that you can renotice everybody with the right language. Am I, am I correct?
That you are correct. And, and also the town engineer is going to want to review this again.
So, so that's what you're asking us to do, isn't it?
So, so when you say to amend it and renotice everybody, what do you, what do you, um, like what exactly is the next step for us? We're a little confused.
Uh, well, I guess, could he do it by a letter? And then, okay, then obviously they have to redo the notice.
They're going to have to renotice because it's a whole new relief requested.
Yeah, when you notice, you had to send out certified mail to all your neighbors.
Right, excuse me, the zoning officer will have to um, update uh, her review. I'll create her um, notice for her and we'll get her taken care of.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome.
We're going to grant your request to amend the application.
And adjourn.
Adjourn this matter until you have a chance to have these, I guess, to, whatever needs to be done. Nora will, will help guide you through what gets to be done. have these, I guess, to whatever needs to be done. Nora will, will help guide you through what gets to be done next.
Okay, so we're coming back for.
We'll have to come back again, yes.
And it's.
Guessing it's not gonna be until July or August.
Oh, that.
Unfortunately, i- it, we're, we're packed. We are packed. I'll get you on July fourteenth. It's still early. You won't run into any um, issues with the winter. So this will give you plenty of time to get yourself, you know, it will approve.
During the July fourteenth.
With any extensions, required extensions.
Any extensions, and uh, you're granting us extensions, which means that we don't have to make a decision before July fourteenth, because if we did, it would be against you. So that, you're gonna technically allow us the time to make a good as, a decision on July fourteenth. Correct?
So then in the, the amended version, that's where we would explain the, the tree, the uh, legalizing existing. And then.
Removal of the tree. And if you want to extend the curb cut, you have to mention that also.
Okay.
And Nora's gonna help you rewrite that so that we are having an application we can approve. All right, so.
Right, I, I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to say one more thing. The problem with the curb cut, um, the engineer department will not consider that until they have approval from the board uh, to expand that piece of driveway.
That's a separate permit application to the engineer. We, we, we.
Yeah.
We can't approve the curb cut. You have to go to the, after we approve what you're asking for, if we do, then you go to the engineer and for a permit to expand the curb cut. So it's a two-step process.
Yeah, so we uh, we actually reached out to the engineering office and they told us that we would get the permit from you guys and then get a um, open road.
Open road permit. They say, once you give the permit, then they will give us the open road permit. And for the three cut, they say, they don't have problem either. We saw.
So have a motion to July fourteenth, as previously stated.
Some more. Some more. Second ready. Second ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None opposed? All right, so between now and July fourteenth, Nora will tell you what to do.
Okay, so we'll hear from her.
The bad news is that you gotta send all those certified mails out again.
We have.
But then I'd be, you're okay. All right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we did already one time. So we gotta do second time certified mail again too for the.
Yes. Yes.
Because it's. Because it's gonna be a different notice. You gotta tell the neighbors again what you're doing.
Oh, that's a bunch of. Okay, and um, okay, so Nora will help us through with the, with everything.
You're in good hands.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is to Nala Gana. Mr. Shepherd, is you here?
Yes, yes. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all again.
And your clients here.
Oh, everybody's somewhere. Now, the only thing that I would mention is um, uh, Mr. Walker couldn't join us this evening. He's the project engineer. One of his affiliates, so with us, Kevin Robine, and uh, he somehow couldn't make himself panelist. So uh, he should be out there in the cyber world. If there's any way we can transform him from a passive uh, participant to a, a panelist, that would be appreciated.
That's Kevin Robine?
Yes, Kevin Robine.
That's done.
Oh, terrific.
He just has to unmute and shows his picture.
I'm here. I just now have to figure out how to get that video on. There we go.
Oh, nice.
I'm here. Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, well, if I may just give a brief recapitulation of, of where we are in this application, and then I'll pick it up with Mr. Robine, and then we have one other witness for you this evening, Ms. Lisa Phillips, a professional planner. Uh, this matter was originally before you back in December, on December second, twenty twenty. Uh, and then we likewise were here before you in February tenth, and now we're here tonight. Uh, basically, what this comes down to is, is the site was previously approved for a yoga studio, which is not a permitted use in the B five zone where the property is located. Um, and the yoga use is still gonna continue. We're proposing to demolish all existing structures on the property and build one new used building. The property is located at one thirty eight North Everwick County Road. Uh, the yoga studio would be uh, the second commercial use on the property. Uh, because the use variance already exists as Mr. Chadwick had opined, we don't have to get a new use variance. Uh, but we're here for site plan uh, based on section seventy six B of the municipal land use board, uh, land use law, uh, the uh, this board retains jurisdictions for site plan review. So the building was a little bigger, reduced. Uh, we have eliminated the D thirty variance. We're down to a handful of C variances. Uh, one of the variances requested is for proposed building mounted signs on the side of the building. If you may recall, the parking lot is on the side of the building. And we're proposing up to three commercial tenants in the building. When we were last here, uh, with the input of Mr. Chadwick, my client agreed to three building mounted signs, no larger than two foot by eight foot being sixteen feet each. Uh, if the math is correct, that's forty eight square feet of signage on the side of the building. There would also be a conforming sign on the front of the building, which would be three, about three feet, one inch by fourteen feet. And then a conforming uh, freestanding sign uh, in front of the building. Uh, we do have areas with regard to on-site parking and residential buffer. Uh, so uh, tonight, uh, Mr. Robine is just gonna touch on some loose engineering issues. And then from there, we're gonna roll right into uh, Ms. Phillips. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask Mr. Robine to be sworn and place his credentials on the record. He is a licensed professional engineer.
Mr. Robine, if you could raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's truce to help you God?
I do.
And for the record, um, are you an engineer?
Yes, I'm fresh, uh, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And have you been qualified before this board or other boards in the state?
Uh, other boards, yes, not, uh, not per se, but in.
How many other boards?
Uh, that'd be twenty. Various towns, different, different uh, boards within each town.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Robine is um, sworn and qualified.
All right, good. May I inquire? Uh, Mr. Robine, are you affiliated with the Dykstra Walker Design Group?
Yes, sir.
In what capacity?
I'm a project manager here.
Okay, and you're a licensed engineer on staff, is that, is that, you work with Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker testified previously on this application.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you're familiar with the project?
Yes.
Okay, now, there were a couple loose engineering items that you and I discussed in, in, at the meeting. You want to tell the board what you know and then see if you can help uh, close any of these loose ends?
Sure, there was a, a, uh, front I've been uh, led to in the prior uh, application or the prior meeting, uh, that there was discussion about pushing the uh, sidewalk, um, and not sidewalk, the parking area a half foot clo- uh, away from the building. Um, which essentially the uh, residential buffer along that side would be, then be reduced to four and a half feet rather than five as previously requested. Just want to make it clear that uh, that's generally the uh, um, uh, the relief granted for the residential buffer that, that's being sought. Um, essentially, uh, there was um, another question about um, the tree line that's on the uh, east side of the property.
Yeah, now Kevin, do you have the ability to share the screen? Do you have the ability to share the screen?
It's grayed out at the moment. I think I need to be given permission.
Could, could we allow Mr. Robine to put the plans up on the screen, please?
There we go. One second.
Please confirm the, the date of uh, any plans that are provided.
Sure. Plans that are shown here are the uh, site plans last revised one twenty uh, twenty one. Um, there's been no revision since this uh, date. I believe these were the plans that were presented at the uh, uh, last uh, board hearing. So just to recap, what we're looking at, achieve three of the plans. Um, the parking area uh, was gonna be shifted a half foot further away from the building to provide more access along the sidewalk.
Kevin, could you zoom in on that, Kevin? It's, it's kind of distant.
Second, please. Using a different laptop today, so it's uh, working through it here. Some reason it's not letting me zoom at the moment. Things ever simple sometimes. If some reason it's not letting me zoom there, Steve, but.
All right, well, I, you know, why don't you use the cursor then? So this way, when you're discussing a certain feature, you can point to it so we're not you know, just looking all over the place for what you're talking about.
Yep. So the parking area here was requested to be shifted a half a foot uh, to the south. Um, the, excuse me, the residential buffer along this side here uh, would be reduced from five feet to four and a half feet. Um, the, with that, with, with that uh, six inch, half a foot shift. Um, there was also uh, general concerns um, as far as the um, planting and the buffering along this side for the uh, uh, residential property to the south. As uh, you may recall from the last meeting, there was discussion um, with the adjoining property owner on lot three as far as the placement of a fence and uh, tree line along that side where the, the joining property owner requested that the fence be located along the prop- property line. Uh, then the trees, whereas uh, the original proposal was to have the, the tree line and then the fence. Um, at the request of that property owner, that was, that was switched over. Um, that did not carry through to the um, the residential property to the south. Uh, whereas, as the plan currently shows in the landscaping plan on sheet five, um, there's a tree row, then a fence similar to what was previously proposed along the uh, uh, common boundary of lot three. Um, we're looking to uh, uh, one either narrow up the spacing of those uh, those trees. Those are green giant arborvitae's. Uh, they grow well and nested together and uh, eliminate the uh, the fence. Um, right now, that the condition is there's a chain link fence along the common property line. And the way the plan is kind of configured, there would be a, a fence, a tree row, and then another fence. Um, either, either that or position the fence up against the common property line adjacent to the chain link fence and have the trees on the opposite side consistent with what would be along the uh, property line with lot three, the joint property lot three.
So Kevin, what you're, what you're showing here, you're proposing now it's concession uh, based on prior input from the board, doubling up the number of green giant arborvitae so that their spacing is half of what's shown here.
Correct, correct.
In, in essence, to try and create a hedge of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, and how high, if you know, do these bushes or these trees grow?
Um, and fully mature, they could be twenty, thirty feet high on a green giant.
Okay, so, so rather than having a fence, bushes, fence, you, you're, you're suggesting to the board, and of course, it's the board's decision, if we could give them this, uh, to put a fence either on the property line to match the fence that's there on the neighbor's property, or just go with the uh, the bushes, but you, you're not suggesting putting the bushes between two fences?
Correct, that's correct.
All right, do you have anything else you'd like to add, Kevin?
I, I believe those were the two main items that I just wanted to bring up uh, at this point.
Okay, I think we've addressed all the other engineering issues. We went through the engineer's report last time out. And this was the only, uh, two little pieces of uh, the puzzle that I think we left open. So I don't have any further questions of Mr. Robine.
Anybody in the board have any questions of the, of the?
I have a question. So when we, when it was moved away from the building a little bit, are we still talking about a four-foot sidewalk and a, a wider no parking fire zone or something like that?
Everything would, would uh, stay relatively the same. Uh, the four-foot wide sidewalk would, would remain. And then that additional six inches would allow for the curb line along the, that sidewalk. Um, the parking area would then shift all relative to the property line another half a foot uh, to make up for that uh, that ha- half foot at the curb line. Uh, no parking, the fire lanes would stay exactly the same, just be shifted uh, to the south.
Just one other question on the uh, residential or the property to the south. I know we have the arborvitae that's proposed. I'm just wondering if um, eventually uh, will there be any gaps or anything for the uh, parking vehicles that are parked there if they have headlights on?
Essentially, what, with reducing the uh, the, the spacing width between what we have currently shown to a half, half that dimension, I believe that goes from six feet to a three foot spacing. Um, green, uh, this type of plant, green uh, green giant arborvitae's uh, pretty much form a solid hedge row, uh, when planted in, you know, that, with that kind of spacing. Um, it would take, you know, a, a growing season or two to completely fill out or fill out to uh, block the uh, to fully screen that uh, joining property. However, it, it will provide for a uh, a solid uh, hedge row.
Okay, so the uh, the effective uh, available lights is not expected to be opposite to the neighbors?
No, no, one, once, once it all grows through, it should be perfectly fine.
Hey, thank you.
Of course.
I have one question. What are the sizes of the, the, uh, giant green arborvitae, right?
Yes.
What is the sizes of planting?
Uh, the plant size uh, is based on the height of the tree. They'll be seventy eight feet tall.
Seventy eight, okay. And it, you'll have a three foot spacing?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Any members of the public wish to ask questions? Any raised hands?
No, hands raised.
I have one more question. I just wanted to um, go over one, one last time. The offsite water, stormwater line. I just wanted to uh, put on the record what's going to happen with the uh, adjoining property owner during the construction activities. Now, how, how is that going to be maintained far as access to their property?
Uh, for the line that's tying out through North Everick Road out to uh, the existing inlet, is that the one you're referring to?
Right, that's very close to the, to driveway to that uh, uh, commercial retail, the commercial project there. So I just wanted to allow access.
Yeah, there'll, there'll need to be some coordination between the contractor performing the work and, and that property owner to ensure that they have access uh, to their property uh, that doesn't impact their operations at any given time. Um, i- it's, it's more of a construction coordination so that they uh, so that their access is provided anytime they need it.
Okay, so as they coordinate with the um, property, other property owner, I think will, will can be sufficient. Thank you. No further questions.
Anybody else? Next witness?
Yes, our next witness is Ms. Lisa Phillips. Ms. Phillips is a licensed professional planner. She should be out there somewhere in the cyber uh, room. Are you with us, Lisa? Can you hear us, Lisa?
Ms. Phillips, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before this board's truce to help you God?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you are a licensed planner?
Yes.
And the testimony you're gonna give today is on planning, is that correct?
Yes.
All your licenses, all, all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
And you qualified before either this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Um, not this board, but yes, dozens of municipalities, yes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn, uh, and all her licenses are in full force and effect, and she's been qualified.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr..
All very good. Uh, Ms. Phillips, uh, you've been engaged by Mr. and Mrs. Adama Lingata in order to provide planning testimony to this board in furtherance of their request for site plan approval and related variances. Can you tell us in anticipation of tonight's presentation, what if uh, what documents you reviewed both relative to this application as well as planning documents of the township?
Sure. Um, I reviewed the zoning ordinance, um, the master plan, which was pretty recent. I believe it was October of, of twenty twenty, so it was a more recent document. Reviewed all of the um, many iterations. Reviewed all of the many iterations of both the site plan as well as the architectural plan. And I was in attendance at both of the prior hearings.
Very good. So let's talk about what variances are requested, and if you would please provide both facts and planning justification for those variants.
Sure. So if I could just go under the or go over the the property first, because I think it's important to point out the nonconformities that exist before I go into the variances. So the site is ten thousand nine hundred square feet. It's more than two and a half times the required lot size.
Ms. Phillips, I hate to interrupt you. Would you like the ability to share the screen so that you can put plans up on the screen? Would that be acceptable?
Sure, I have some photographs. And in case we need the aerial, I do have Mr. Walker's aerial.
Also, there is an existing conditions plan. It was part of the plan set. I think it's sheet number two. So perhaps we can look at that as well if that would help.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the photos that were taken last summer by my intern. So you can see the existing site is in the photograph in the upper left. The commercial property, the commercial portion of the property is on the right side. The residential is on the left.
Ms. Phillips, just as a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to identify those photos. I know they were submitted in advance, but let's put a number on them. And then from there, we can qualify them. I think we're up to exhibit A five being the the photos that get up here this evening. So why don't we cyberly mark them as A five, and then I'll subsequently send a mark set to the board for their So we'll identify this as Phillips A or exhibit A five site photo.
Yes, it's 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 two sheets, a total of eight photographs. And the exhibit is dated August tenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, and to the best of your knowledge, these photographs fairly and accurately represent the conditions of the subject property adjoining properties as they're each referenced on the photos and the
Yes, yes.
Very good. So why don't you walk us through the photos? Tell us what we see and how it relates to this application.
Sure. So when I was going to discuss the nonconformities, one of them is shown in the photograph in the upper left. We have two curb cuts. So when we were discussing the the parking situation, the deficit that we have with the new application, we have the same amount of deficit with the existing. So what would be required right now is seven spaces. We're providing four on the site now with two curb cuts. So with the new proposal, we're requiring a variance for three parking spaces, but we're eliminating one of the curb cuts. And we're eliminating the need to back out. So I think that's important for the board to know. It's it's definitely a safety improvement to what's what's there now.
Now, Ms. Phillips, just so everybody's clear, the existing property, oh, the property as it exists today is developed with the structure that you see there in the first photograph on the top half, top left corner of the screen. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
So it's kind of like a ranch style house affixed to a commercial building?
Yes.
Okay, on the right hand side, I believe it's the yoga studio, left hand side is some type of residential structure?
That's right.
And joined together as one building?
Yes.
Okay, and it's your understanding this entire thing is going to be demolished?
Yes.
Okay, so please continue.
Okay, the upper right photograph, you can see a portion of the residential building on the far right. And then it's the building that adjoins next to us at the corner, and that house is the UPS store. So you can see the relationship to the two buildings presently. The lower left is the Krausers, which is adjacent to the south. And then the next building is a commercial building at the corner of Oneida and and North Beverwick. The next series of photographs is on the other side of Oneida. I believe it's like a psychic studio. It's another commercial use. The photograph in the upper right is just the strip commercial properties that exist across the street. And the last two photographs as well just continue north. So the dance studio would be to the south. And then as you head north opposite the site, that's the the image that you see of commercial properties on North Beverwick. I'm going to stop sharing. Stop sharing, okay. So in terms of the nonconformities that exist presently, we have an existing mixed use building with a dwelling unit on the first floor, which is not permitted. We have a buffer along the southerly property line where it meets the residential zone is only six point three feet and fifteen is required. The number of parking spaces, which I mentioned before, seven are required. We have four. So that's a three parking space deficit. And again, the parking arrangement with the tandem situation where vehicles have to back into and out of the road. That's also a nonconformity. So the variances that we're seeking are the variance for the residential landscape buffer. So along the east side, which abuts residential property, and then a portion of the southerly side, which which abuts the R four zone, which is residential as well. We don't maintain that fifteen foot buffer. In some areas, it's six feet, and in the area to the south, it would be five point five feet, as testified to this evening. So it has it has decreased because of the increase in the sidewalk area. So in that area, I'd like to put up another exhibit that Mr. Walker had done, because I think the aerial helps us to see. Yeah, hopefully I can invite this.
And and for purposes of clarity, this was received on December second, twenty twenty as exhibit A two, prepared by Mr. Walker's.
Yeah. And he's given me permission to use his his document. It's part of the whole team package.
Can you zoom in on this, Lisa?
I'm trying. I did a little bit. Yeah, I'm trying.
Yeah, that's better.
Is that better? Okay, I'm just trying to get in both both ends. Okay. So the buffer that we were speaking about earlier is is right in here, which is the southerly portion. That dwelling sits all the way back here, and that fronts on Oneida. So you can see there's already some trees and things like that in the back, and then they have a chain link fence. So I think with the arborvitae, the addition of the arborvitae, I think it's going to be sufficient. Of course, the board can make a condition that in the future, if there is any light exposure, that's, you know, a problem with this neighbor that if, you know, we could add something. But right now it is rather far back. And right now they have two commercial properties butt upright against to them that don't even have the the ten foot buffer. So we are, you know, trying to ameliorate that that variance in this area. And again, it's because the the site is narrower than it is long. So this building really needed to be in a perpendicular situation, which created the parking on the side. The buffer on the east side is in here. Now, it's not in encroachment with building. The building is set back the fifteen feet. So the dwelling, let me just shift this up. The dwelling on this side, which is on Tioga, I believe it's twenty five Tioga, sits back here. So we don't actually abut where the dwelling is. We do not have any windows on this portion, if I can, if you can see the cursor. This portion of the elevation, there is a window that's set back that does face east, but it's it's several. It's probably forty, fifty feet back. So I know that was one of the concerns of the board at the last discussion was, is anyone going to be looking out over, you know, into this backyard? But there's no windows on this side. There are windows on the north side, and then there is a window here that does face east. But again, this residential property sits against the UPS store with not much of a buffer, just a fence line in here. So I don't think anything that we're proposing close to either of the residences or the residential properties would have any kind of detriment. And I think what we've done, we've listened to the board, because at one point, this buffer was a little narrower. We did eliminate that dumpster location, if you remember. So we did a lot of positive things back here right against the residential property. So I think the board can be comfortable in granting that variance, knowing that the applicant has tried and has put in the the fence that is was requested by this property owner. And then the landscaping on what would be the subject property site rather than having it reversed. So we did listen to both the board and the neighbor in terms of of that. The other variance that we're seeking relates to the parking. So we're deficient by three spaces. I believe initially, we had fifteen parking spaces proposed. But we were able to manage to, you know, modify that and increase it to sixteen parking spaces. So I'm sorry, thirteen are proposed, sixteen are required, and thirteen are proposed. At one time, we had twelve. We did add one one space. So again, having the shared parking situation, I think mitigates some of the issues with having the parking variance. It is only three spaces. With the elimination of the curb cut along North Beverwick, we do gain an on-street space. And one of the RSIS allowances for seeking a de minimis waiver is that if you have any on-street availability, that that can go against it. So ultimately, we're gaining one on the street by eliminating the second curb cut. We've increased what we could on-site. So really, it's it's a variance for two two spaces that we're lacking. And again, this is mixed use, and one of the purposes of having mixed use, particularly in these kind of areas, is that you do have a shared parking situation. So I think the board can be comfortable, you know, granting that variance, that the applicant has tried to fit in as much parking as possible. And again, this is in a downtown setting. There is some public parking not too far away. And this is kind of a common situation. Not everybody in your downtown is going to have all of the onsite parking accommodated. We also are located within two blocks of residential streets. So if there is any overflow parking, say for a particular event at one of the apartments or something like that, there is on-street parking allowed on in the residential areas nearby. So you do have the ability to have, you know, walking distance for people to 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 use that parking. And the final variance is for the number and the size of the wall signs. So I believe a lot of discussion, you know, during the last testimony about during the last hearing about the number of side of signs, the sizes of the signs. So because this building is perpendicular, what would be considered the front of the building is North Beverwick, but what is considered in terms of identifying the location where to access the building from the parking lot is really the southern elevation. So what had been agreed to was anticipating that there may be three commercial tenants. That there'd be three two foot by eight foot signs, and they'd be located above the doorways. And then there'd be a freestanding side. The freestanding side does not require any variances. So I think a total of one hundred and forty three square feet would be permitted if we were using that entire length, that that was considered the front. And what we're proposing is only forty eight feet.
Ms. Phillips, do you have the rendering for Mr. Bias, the project architects?
Uh, yes.
Could you bring that up? Because I think that would help. Nice.
Okay, so this is a little different, if you recall, because during the testimony, this is when we discussed a little modification to the building. So there's three signs, and they're not as large as that. So right now this shows the two. But there will be a total of three, two by eight along the top. So it doesn't look like that exactly. I think there have been modifications made to the I don't think the changes had been represented on a plan yet, but the discussion was that we were going with three.
And I would remind, I would remind the board that the applicant agreed that the signs would be on the building mounted signs would be externally illuminated with loose neck lighting in order to soften the appearance. Okay.
All right, should I stop sharing that? Do you need that again?
That's fine. I just I just wanted to just let everybody see that.
Sure.
So is there a presentation material for the freestanding double sided sign, just to depict it? This is based on the eleven by seventeen that was provided on January twenty seventh. It has reference to building A and building B. I didn't know if you were going to have a third part of that sign or not for the third business.
You know, we we have not, because right now it's only two tenants. It's going to be the yoga studio is going to take up two of the three spaces. And then the the front store, if you will, would have another tenant. So right now, we're only anticipating two tenants in the building. However, in the event that the space is ever broken up, we'd like to have the ability to have three building mounted signs. The freestanding sign in front of the building would be fully compliant with the town ordinance as far as height, size, location, etc. So it's only going to have two tenants listed on it right now.
On the freestanding sign in the front, I made a comment, you would use the pedestal mounting method as opposed to that single pole.
Correct, and we agreed to that, I believe.
Site plan showed it on a pole, and the architect's plan shows it on a pedestal.
Yeah, exhibit exhibit A four showed that it was it was on a pedestal, but yes, it will be the pedestal sign, not the not the poles.
Fine.
Okay, so Ms. Phillips, can you justify those wall signs since they're not committed?
Sure. Well, again, like I said, it's the orientation of the building. It's the the shape of the property. It's narrower and long. So we oriented the building lengthwise. And proportionately, we'd be allowed, if that had faced North Beverwick under the ordinance, we would be allowed to go, I believe, to one hundred and forty three or one hundred and forty eight square feet. And the total square footage of signage on the southerly elevation is only forty eight. So I think it's proportional, and I think that's what, there was a lot of discussion, if you remember, at the February hearing about that. About the aesthetics, about how many, you know, about providing people sufficient identification to to find each store. And I think we kind of really reviewed it sufficiently. And again, it relates to the the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, and the shape of the building on the lot.
All right, is it fair to say, Ms. Phillips, that when people come to the site, they park in the parking lot? These signs will help identify which unit belongs to which store?
Yes.
So in other words, if these signs weren't on this side of the building, you'd have to figure out for yourself which was which tenant was the one you were looking?
Right, you'd pretty much have to get up to the doors, and then I anticipate something would be on the doors. But yes, you wouldn't be able to just from the parking lot know which way to head.
Okay, now, from a planning standpoint, can you justify these three C variances for the board?
Sure, I think when looking at the project in entirety, there's some case law on this that permits a board to look at the application in terms of what's being proposed, what is the entire project, instead of just analyzing each and every variances. I think I did survive, did support the individual variances. But if we want to look at this as a whole, we need to look to the Breschman versus versus Gash case and the Poland versus Township of South Plainfield cases. In both situations, the court found that a board can analyze the project relative to desirable visual environment. And looking at the entirety of this redevelopment, so looking at the positives where we're taking two curb cuts away, we're providing one, we're taking away the the fact that cars have to back out onto a busy county road. We've got sufficient parking, all of those things combined, and then decide, you know, is this sufficient evidence to prove? And I think that besides all the testimony I gave on the three individual variances, that looking at this in terms of an entire application, I think the board would feel comfortable in approving this. Also, my analysis had to look at the the negative criteria, in particular with the public good, as well as the impairment to the master plan. So I did review the master plan in detail, and there was a lot of discussion. They have broken out certain sections of town that they'd like to see have rehabilitation and or redevelopment. And the North Beverwick Road Corridor is one of those areas that's been looked at in detail. And it had particular goals and objectives related to having mixed use. In fact, one of the goals I'd like to read, because it is interesting relative to the yoga studio, which I know we received the use variance for. But the one of the goals from the twenty twenty master plan talks about this zone in particular is to expand and the allowable uses, including providing for fitness and recreation classes, multiple permitted uses in one space, and entertainment related uses. Additionally, there's a recommendation to explore adding provisions to the B five district, which we're in, that promote a mixed use area with high quality design, considering a height of three stories where mixed use Considering a height of three stories where mixed use residential over commercial are provided and required parking can be accommodated on-site. So I think this application, you know, fits that to a T. We're taking, you know, kind of a tired old building with a lot of nonconformities, putting up a new building and I think it's going to generate a lot of positive energy along that that frontage too. I think the town wants to see some of these older properties redevelop. So in terms of impairment to the master plan, I don't believe that there are any. I think that we actually affirm the goals of the master plan. And in terms of any kind of detriment to the public good, the board realizes that the wording is actually substantial detriment. And I think in this case, I really can't think of any any detriment proposed. Again, we're making it safer. We're putting in an adequate buffer. We've listened to the board and we've listened to the neighbor. That's right adjacent to us in terms of what their needs and wants were in terms of screening. So I think the application speaks for itself at this point. I think I've addressed the positive and the negative. And I hand it back to Steve.
Okay, I don't have any further questions in Ms. Phillips.
Bernie, want to open up to members of the public? I think you're muted, Bernie.
No, I'm not. Can't hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Can you hear me? I fixed it.
So wasn't I? Any members of the public wish to ask any questions in this field? Raise your hands so we're continuing.
No hands raised.
No hands raised. Once again, any board members have any questions? Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheppes?
Uh, there's no more witnesses, so I I would only have a few closing comments, unless there's somebody from the public that would like to make a statement. I don't anticipate.
Anybody from the public wish to speak in favor or against this application? Please raise your hand.
No hands raised.
No hands raised. Floor is yours, Mr. Sheppes.
Okay, well, well, first, everybody, thank you so much for all your time and your input. This is one of those applications that kind of got molded as we proceeded through the review process. And I believe that the input that the board gave and even some of the neighbors, even though it wasn't during the hearing, was very helpful. I think that what we ended up with is a the best project that one could come up with for this property. We were able to eliminate the D three conditional use variance. And we were able to come up with some modifications to the building, to the signage, to the buffering that really kind of like puts a good O on this on this package. As we come down to it, this is a very unusual circumstance because the board usually wanted here is a site plan application. It's coupled with a D variant, whether it be D three, D two, D one. But that variance had already been granted years ago for the yoga studio, which gives this board jurisdiction. On the section seventy-six of the municipal land use law, you retain jurisdiction for site plan. So we're here just for site plan. The variances that we're requesting are C variances, bulk variances, hardship variances, C two flexible C variances. I believe the testimony is overwhelming that there'll be sufficient parking in light of the mixed use. The additional on-street parking created by this that rough the thirteen faces on-site. And I believe the board can be comfortable that this will not represent any detriment and that the site will support itself for onsite parking. As far as the landscape buffer, as you noted from the testimony of Ms. Phillips, two commercial uses next moves don't provide really any buffer. We're providing substantially more. A matter of fact, in most area adjacent to the building, there is a fifteen foot landscape buffer, eight foot high green giant arbor bodies, they grow like two feet a year, probably within five years, it's going to be twenty feet high. And I believe that we have enough buffering and separation that the board can can feel comfortable that we're providing the the ordinance intends that there be a buffer between this commercial use and the adjoining residential uses. And I'd also give credit to the project architect, Mr. Bias. He came up with a plan that not only eliminated the D three variance, but also provides for no windows on the side of those residences, which I think that's helpful. So you don't have that, you know, the windows looking down on somebody's backyard. And I think he did a great job too with the the aesthetics. I mean, really, what do you have now? You've got two houses that are stuck together. One is residential, one's commercial. It's it's something that really needs to go. And what Mr. Bias came up with is something that precipitally can be proud of. I think it it it's really going to look good over there and I think that it's going to be something that the neighbors are going to appreciate and that the town can be proud of. With regard to the wall signs, it speaks for itself. The main entrances to these stores are off the side. You really need to have some kind of identification for those uses. And that variance, I believe, is readily justifiable as both the hardship because of the shape of the building and location of the parking as well as the C two. So I believe that the three variances have been well proven and I think the site plan, as confirmed by your engineer, doesn't have any has any concerns that we haven't addressed, satisfies all of the criteria associated with a site plan review. I do mention too that there is a soil movement permit application associated with this, all over eleven eleven hundred cubic yards, which results from the removal of the material from the basement. We submitted for that simultaneously with this application and we asked that you grant that approval. We did get a commentary memo back from the municipal engineer and we agree to meet all of his comments as contained in that memo. So for all the reasons stated, we asked you to grant this approval and that this project move forward to construction and eventually benefit to the neighborhood and and hopefully there'll be more to come in in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheppes. Does anybody think we need to go into conference? Or does somebody want to make a statement about this case?
I can make a statement. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Debbie.
Okay, my my statement is, Ms. Peters has been here for two and a half hours. Thank you for that. The other statement is this applicant clearly is responding to the requests of this committee and the input from the neighbors. I think they'll make a nice addition to neighborhood. I'm still a little not real thrilled about the parking thing, but I guess that'll be overcome and so I'll be voting in favor of this application.
Anybody else want to make any comments or somebody want to make a motion?
Let me make a motion.
Good.
Application twenty colon eighteen, Generalagada, one thirty-eight North Beverick Road, block five eleven, lot number two, zone B dash five to issue or grant a primary and final major site plan with the C and D variance for construction of a mixed use building.
All right, so we should, do we need to include that we're granting the soil removal permit?
Is that part of this application? If so, yes.
And subject to the reports that filed by our experts.
Did they apply, did? Did the applicant apply for the soil moving permits?
Yes, yes, Mr. Sheppes indicated that it was part of the application.
Okay, then it is included in the approval process.
There's a second? I think you had to make this such, subject to all the items they agreed to. I didn't hear that.
I said that, but I may have said.
I apologize.
Said it wrong, but I said something.
The audio didn't.
That's included, yes. That'll be in the resolution. Was there a second?
Second person.
Okay, I guess we call a roll at this point.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz. Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Persad.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate all your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sheppes.
Thanks.
Good luck, good luck to your clients. Do we have any other business before the board?
I would just say, Mr. Berkowitz, I want to thank Nora for hanging in there all night tonight. I know she's not feeling great. Second shot. So bless her, Nora, get some sleep. Take some Tylenol. It helped me. And Nora, I was chairman. Shouldn't you post to call me last, not first?
Probably so.
Motion to adjourn.
Give her a break, Bernie, come on.
Motion to adjourn. That's why I didn't say anything.
So moved.
Second.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
See you next week.
Mr. King, can we talk later? Is Peter still on?
He's gone.
Okay, all right. I was just concerned about that Sonia case today about being ill advised from our town, I guess. So anyway. Okay.
We'll never know.
Yeah, bye.